Looking over to this weekend, I'm sure for sure, but mine, I'm gonna have to bag myself. Alright, let's call us being yours, come and play with allegiance, please. I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay, calls running forward to order, um, everyone here has been here before, so you know all the uh, emergency access, please uh, mute your phones and uh, the rest so that you don't interrupt things, okay? Uh, let's see, next item up, approval of minutes. And anybody have any comments, questions, changes? Does that motion to approve minutes? Anybody in second of mine? Uh, any other comments? Um, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Okay.
I'm gonna abstain.
Abstained by Tim. Necessarily absent tonight is Aaron Sweden. He's with family in Merle Beach, so. Yeah, we should be all with him. Um, first order of business, there are two continued public hearing, one is for site plan, PB zero seven oh three days twenty-one, which is a preliminary site plan approval. The other is for PB zero eight zero four days twenty-one, and especially use permit, preliminary industrial park. Um, I assume there's no one, is anyone online at all?
Not, uh, not for those, but yeah.
Okay. Alright, so let's uh, move to Ron, give us the update of what's going on, tell us about the final flat approval.
Okay, well, we received a request today, from uh, the project engineer for EBS, requesting uh, a ninety day extension, from the Davis letter to the approved signature of map filing, for the approved subdivision yes, in this rural industrial park. Um, which relates to.
Correct.
To two subject matters of this public hearing. The way it relates is that they are for a lot that does not exist.
Right. So the history, for those who don't know, is because they did not file the final site plan with the town for signatures, obviously then they couldn't file it. County, so it's an unfiled action, it's been over a hundred eighty days, correct, Ron?
By code, determined to be null and void.
Correct.
So they're going to have to resubmit a final subdivision flat. Hopefully with all the conditions that they never put on the original.
Correct.
Final flat. And it'll be the simple resolution, and hopefully at your next meeting, to get that moved forward and approved, so it can be filed by July ninth? Uh, no, June ninth, June ninth. Which is the date for the continuation of these two applications here for the preliminary site plan and the special use permit for lot number four of that subdivision.
Right, and the continuation resolution is due July twentieth.
Correct. They had to turn everything in by June.
Correct. For the July twentieth, okay.
So that's where they started.
That's how the, the pieces come together. And that's why we cannot act on these two tonight, and plus, move them to July twentieth. So, anything else, Ron? Okay, Dan, tell us a little bit about the request and uh.
Yeah, uh, as Ron stated, we did get the ninety day request, uh, I had lots of talk to the applicant and their engineer. Uh, they realized that you guys have been very gracious in continuing this project multiple times. Uh, they are ready to move forward, and they have anticipated being ready to submit everything by the June ninth. Cut off date, so they would put it on their July twentieth meeting, and they have determined that that is enough time. And uh, I will discuss the getting that sub, the final sub back in front of you guys as quickly as possible. Uh, for a reapproval.
Right, and since we're talking about all this, the re, the refiling of the final, we talked about just before the meeting. It can go as fast as the applicant wants it to go, we're understanding that they may want to ask for waiver of fees, which obviously puts the town board in the loop, which could take a little longer. But we expect it all to be done by done and given to us, so we can see it on the last meeting in May. That's the goal right now, is for us to see that final site plan, or the final, I'm sorry, the final subdivision flat, that the last meeting in May, so we can prove it, they can sign it, file it, and we can still get into the July twentieth. For the preliminary site plan and the special use, correct, Dan?
That is, correct.
Oh, I got that stuff figured out. Alright, okay, okay, any from Highway on this one? Okay, engineering. Okay, this is a public hearing, do we have anyone in the public either online or in the room that would like to talk about this application, for or against? Again, one more time, anyone in the room or online that would like to speak for or against this application? Okay, we'll turn to the board, any additional comments? Doug? Tim? Okay, so we have a resolution in front of us that would continue both of these to, or do we have two resolutions? There are two resolutions continuing these July twentieth, I'll set the motion to block, waive the reading, and approve these two resolutions as presented.
Motion by Tim.
Motion by Tim, second of mine. Adrian, any other comments? Court figure will go. Aye, okay. That takes care of those two, next item up, safe place storage, okay? Before we get any further, let me kind of discuss kind of where we are at, okay? We have two resolutions before us. Is special use permit is a public hearing, preliminary site plan is not, so we'll deal with the special use permit first. Then we'll deal with the preliminary site plan. So, let's start with the special use permit, tell us a little bit about what's going on with the special use permit.
Yeah, I, I think uh, we are just making sure that we have included everything that we are doing in this site plan, I think we have done that. Um, I think nothing's really changing in the current view, so we're just making sure we're adhering to everything the way it's supposed to, but I know we're in good shape on that front. No major comments on that, but we'll have to answer any questions anyone has.
Okay, let's start over again, talking about special use permit public hearing, Ron?
Right. Resolution has been drafted to approve the special use permit with the conditions contained in the findings of the board. And we're ready to go on this one.
Alright, Dan?
Yeah, uh, they, they went through the code and answered every uh, letter of uh, special use permit. Uh, pretty straightforward and covered everything, so as Ron stated, there is a draft resolution, it's ready to go.
Perfect. Highway? Special use permit. Okay, Lance?
I don't have any issues, but the board moved forward with special use permit.
Okay, this is a public hearing, do we have anyone to speak for or against this application, this is special use permit, zero one zero four days twenty-two, safe place storage. Again, one more time, online or in person, anyone like to speak for or against the special use permit, safe place storage? With that said, I'll turn it over to the board, Tim?
Uh, it's a long read, but understandable, I'm good.
Doug? Adrian?
I'm good.
I did all these comments on long read and uh, but I think we've covered everything, so we have a special use permit resolution for approval with conditions. But have anyone to move, oh, I'm sorry, we need to close a public hearing, so motion to close public hearing? Move to the second end, all in favor? Aye. Public hearing is closed. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the resolution with conditions and waive the reading? Move by even second if I dug, any other comments? Court figure will open. Aye. Okay, next item up is preliminary site plan approved, so let me start with this one, I mean, I know you got a lot of stuff going on, but um, we had a meeting here in the town hall today, talked about this application, and I went out on a limb and made a commitment that we will have a resolution with conditions for approval of the preliminary site plan in our next meeting. The resolution we have tonight is for continuation, there were a number of discussions about different things, including the water and sewer issues, turnaround issues, and there were a number of issues, and certainly there are a number of issues that were brought up by staff, certainly from Ron's comments on the application and site point, that we will write a resolution with conditions to address anything and everything that's still not open um, for the next meeting for this one. Now, with that said, I wanted to lay the groundwork so everybody knew what was going on before we got started. Would you have, if you'd like to add anything to that, I just wanted you to know, we're gonna do something on the preliminary site plan at our next meeting.
Yes, just curious as to why nothing could be done this time, we just.
I'm not gonna go there.
Okay?
Okay? I'm not gonna go there, I've done this once today, I'm not doing it again. You don't want me to go any further on this one, okay? Staff will tell you, you don't want me to go any further, I know. That's the right answer, alright, Ron? Oh, no, it wasn't. Ron?
You handled it all.
Okay, Dan?
So I uh, with staff will continue to work with the applicant, uh, so that we are in a good spot next meeting, and then we'll take any board concerns also, and try to make sure all conditions are in that draft for you.
Right, and I, but I would go one step further, you saw all of the, the things that Ron brought up in his, his uh, issues he felt were with the project.
Some, some things.
So, I know, some things I understand. What I'm gonna say is, there are probably things there you could easily add to the project before we get to the final review through this, and there would just be one less condition on there in the process. So, keep that in mind as we go through, okay? Okay, anything else, Dan? Tim?
Just wanna let you know that I'm okay with the way the turnaround is presented on both sides.
Well, I appreciate that, sir.
As long as we get the drawing of the hammerhead taken out of there. You see what I'm saying? And you don't need a drawing of a hammerhead, we're not gonna have it. I understand, I understand. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to give you some advice, okay?
That's all.
Okay, now, engineering, I want Lance to tell us about stormwater and all the issues and water and sewer issues, and just kind of give us an overview of why we're going forward, and how we're going to word everything as it goes forward with a preliminary site plan with conditions, so it relates to stormwater and water and sewer.
Sure, so MRB group did issue a comment letter here in February ninth. That is on the preliminary overall plans that have been provided to us, the SWIP, the drainage, and the special use permit application. That is one reason why we didn't issue another preliminary comment letter before tonight's meeting, because the applicant did provide revised plans addressing, let's say, most or some of those comments in verbal form, and then I haven't had a chance to go through all the technicalities of it all. So I focused my efforts on stormwater and a couple of questions that were raised by the board and staff at previous meetings. With that being said, one of those items was stormwater, obviously, and so I think it's important for the board to understand stormwater as relates to any and every project. When stormwater requirements are, when there is a stormwater requirement mitigation for water quality and quality control elements related to a project that disturbs more than one acre of soil, we have to do this process. This process takes from the start of the project to the very end, after the board gives an approval, it's still being worked out. The way we review the application is almost never has a stormwater in its full capacity been ironed out before you guys get a plan for review at preliminary level. There, the, the applicant and the design engineer provide us documentation so that we can review to make sure, one, they're moving towards that goal of providing the full extent possible of the mitigation measures needed in order for it to be compliant with the town's criteria and the DEC criteria. So when we review it, we make sure that they're going that level. Because if they're not, then that's when I raise the red flag and say, okay, because if they're not choosing to go that route, that means they're proposing an alternative measures that requires additional review by DEC outside of our control. Ninety percent, if not a hundred percent of the applications that we've been getting are heading towards fully compliant with the town's criteria and DEC criteria. So, when we comment on it, a lot of times I have technical comments related to stormwater, hydrology modeling, certain drainage plans, certain elevations and so on. It's not because the project itself isn't compliant, it's that certain elements have to be provided for us to verify that the calculations provided make sense. They're all working towards that goal, this project in particular is working towards that goal. I can tell you that as of right now, I don't have any issues with them being fully compliant with the town's stormwater requirements in the New York State DEC Florida. They're gonna meet the minimum criteria necessary in order for us to provide approval and an MS4 approval run at the end of the, end of the day, assuming they were to get final approval. I cannot sign the plans, I cannot sign the MS4 form, I cannot approve the SWIP unless they do that. I don't have any issues with the design mechanisms that they're proposing on site in terms of bio and the water quality measures that they're proposing to do. I think their size to handle all the site improvements that are proposed. Now, how it's functioning from one side to another side in terms of capturing, that's what we're working with. One of the items that was of a concern was that pipe that crosses the, the, uh, the forest ring. The reason why that was held up for as long as I believe it was, is because for a long time the town was saying, we can't have any pipes crossing it. That caused the red flag to go up and say, okay, well, until we solve that concern, whether we can put a pipe across it, I can't authorize moving forward through staff review on drainage, because that could result in something different being provided. As we got more information related to that, we now found out the town will allow a pipe to go across that forest ring. Now, with that being said, there's still criteria that has to be met, there's still separation criteria, as we do on every project that has a crossing of a pipe, there's minimum height requirements that have to have, this project will do that. We are working on the sizing of that pipe to verify, to give us as much flexibility in that coverage as possible. So, we can reduce the pipe sizes that are being proposed to two pipes at a smaller size, still meeting the same criteria that we're working with, and give us maximum coverage of that pipe of the forest ring where needed, if we need to. That is something that we're still working through. I also believe that if worst case came to it, where we found out later on that they couldn't dip the pipe across that, because the forest ring, which we don't know the depth of that forest ring at, if it's too shallow and they can't go under it or above it, I do believe there's a way for us to eliminate this pipe that's going to get water to that bio, to that facility, without there being uh, uh, an issue that we can't resolve or that they can't resolve stormwaterly. So at the end of the day, I have no issues with the board moving forward with a preliminary approval, if that's what you guys are going to move forward with, with the understanding that, one, stormwater on the site isn't going to be an issue. Two, we can resolve the crossing of that forest ring either by reducing the pipe size to two smaller pipes, meeting the criteria, or removing altogether and doing sheet flow across the top of it if necessary. So that's stormwater. Um, as it relates to, there were some questions on open green space criteria, which is a concern of this board and every project that comes before you. Uh, we did a rough calculations from CAD based on applicants from projects that was provided. Um, the total site area is reported nine point seven six plus or minus acres.
That's both sides of the road.
Correct, that's the whole lot.
Correct.
The impervious area, now this is worded differently, but I'll try to summarize it. The impervious area with the pond is approximately six point two nine acres, so that's all hard surfaces, including the pond. That comes to be to six point two eight acres, which is sixty-four point four percent area of coverage, leaving thirty-five point six percent green space of it. I'm sorry, that's without the pond, I said with pond, that's the impervious surface without the pond being calculated in. So the grid, the pond would be part of the green space count, which gave us the thirty-five point six percent. And previous, then we did another one, impervious area with the pond included is six point four nine acres, which is sixty-six point five percent, leaving thirty-three point five percent irritate of green space. Then we did a third one, which is the impervious surface with the pond and all the other stormwater mechanisms, the biospells and so on, area included, which is approximately six point seven five acres of, of impervious surface, creating to sixty-nine point two percent impervious surfaces, leaving thirty point eight percent green space, which would then include the pond and the bio area, which I think implies with code, it's close, but but nonetheless, it gives you a better accurate understanding of what that green space is that's out there.
Right, that was a request I made to do the green space count, just to make sure everybody knows exactly where we're at, so we're at thirty, thirty percent, which is hope.
Now, at any point in time, the project going forward, and I'm not speaking on staff's behalf or the applicant's or the board's, from my understanding is that as this plan for it evolves and changes, that number still has to be reviewed, because there is.
Absolutely.
If it does go below, then that would cause them to have to go another route, or amend it, or go through a different process.
Right. And uh, we go one step further and talk about the water and sewer in the conversations today in the meeting. The water and sewer superintendent wanted a condition uh, of approval that he reviews and I, and Ron is gonna have to work with the um, the soil and water uh, director, and get whatever wording he wants in that condition, so that, I use the word, he's happy with whatever at the end. That's probably not an official uh, uh, condition of approval, but uh, it's what we want to occur.
I, I believe, well, ultimately, I'm not speaking for me.
I understand.
The location of the forest ring has to be verified. And then ultimately, the depth of the forest ring has to be verified.
Right.
It's the only way, it's part of final review and approval of this project, and we can determine that proper separation is being. We can design it, go through it, make assumptions, but at some point, that has to be evaluated, which is one of the issues that we've been talking around for a while.
Right.
But I think at this point, if the board and staff are able to move forward with the project, that would be something that has to be done prior to final.
And to bring the board up speed, town did hire a villager to go in and verify the depth of that forest ring yesterday, and they were unable to locate the forest ring. So, in whatever they did, wherever they did it, they couldn't find the forest ring, so they were not able to provide the data that uh, the water and sewer department needed, so there'll have to be additional something done to determine the, the depth of that forest ring through some method, I don't know what that is, but I'll leave that to staff to figure it out.
There was a lot of rock in it.
Yeah.
So the vibration, so they did what they thought they could do.
Right.
They weren't really confident that they knew where it was, cost a lot of money to get that far, so they stopped.
I know. So that's kind of where we stand with that, so, we have a um, okay, go ahead.
So, that's gonna hold up the final though? I believe, my, my thought would be town, staff, Robin, this, this afternoon, what I remember saying is that that has to be located and the depth verified.
How is the rock weight?
Six foot.
Yeah, so we're, we have a plan in place with town's staff next week, uh, to try to get that.
Yeah, and they, again, there's a bunch of different ways that they can determine that, now we'll figure it out one way or the other, but it has to be figured out before final.
Does he hit the rock with it? Or we hit the rock with, he does all of those grades and stuff, and he's.
Well, this is down below.
It's part of the, yeah.
Where we're at, yeah.
Well, I know the pipe is part of the, but he's not gonna be jackhammering that rock.
No, I'm staff right now because of COVID, we got a bunch of staff in water and sewer. I rate it's part of the town of COVID, they'll be back next week, and then we'll be able to use all of our insurance and feel good.
Okay, cool.
We should be able to find this.
That being said, we turn to, any else, Adrian, on this one? The conditions of, of preliminary when we see the next one out, so get any comments you have into staff early on this one.
No, I mean, as long as we know where the thing is, I know it's always drilled on the picture somewhere, it's here and here, but I guess we should know.
If it isn't, our location is deeper than six feet. No problems then.
They, they were, they were glad they did a channel about, I don't know, six feet long and another one, they were, it was cold, I could tell. I could white product coffee, it was not the most fun thing to be doing in the rain, it was blasting water down there, but I could see the rocks, you know. We, we, we built on the second, it was all actually was one piece, we built on that down here, it's not, there's no jackhammering it, we're not going to do a foundation, there's nothing like that.
I know it's not slabs, but I didn't go because the hill, you have to cut so much and so much.
No, no, all that hill, hill is from where the road was when they lowered the road, that's all. The old stuff up, up there, that's all.
Any, Doug?
Um, I had a couple, they, I mean, just uh, like where the parking was, the suggestion about that back, and Danny Guy was wondering if you guys have looked at putting that on the other side of the fence, he was walking that fence up. So that way, inside your curb fence line, I would say, you know, we're not having.
That, I mean, uh, curb fence, what do you have in the, in the, in the inside hearing?
Yeah, exactly.
There's an area right here, right here, there's a, uh, like, like I'm looking at, there's some drainage from the original design here. There might be a drainage aspect from Coolers Spur Space, all of this, to, to verify just what you're talking about, whether we should keep it here or possibly go there. You know, for me to do a little bit of a panel, like it's a move fence, but.
No, I don't know, I mean.
We were gonna look into, like Lance and I talked about it today, how if um, the, the original design, if there was a, if there was a stormwater feature involved with that, or if that was just a drainage collection area, but.
Okay, I, I do have an answer to that though, um, so, all, as being protection, virtual drivers of, all our drivers are, are drivers, they can back into parking spaces if they pull out of them, that's how, it's, it's weird, so the back facility is across the street, right?
Yeah.
If you go over there and, and uh, whatever morning, and look at all the cars, usually people pull in the parking space tomorrow, they're all back ticked, it's like one of these things for, for professional drivers, that they, they have to safely back in and out of these driveways, they, they just back into parking space, they block. And, and, and in addition to that, there's almost, almost zero people going for it. During the summer, Morgan has a few people, but the winter time, there's literally maybe two people, other people that are going to be transferred, go across that area, other than our employees, and there's nobody else down there.
Okay, any else, Doug?
Um, I mean, some of the stuff I had, we, more finely, the last thing, I think, some of the shrubs out there, um, are just like, they're floating in nowhere, and I've, I've got a corner, there's a couple of roodacrens, I think, but, yeah.
Yeah, we, yeah, what have been pods around.
Are there, is there gonna be like mulching around those areas, because I just, it looked like there was a little shrub out there, maybe, so I was, it's one that's like a mulch bed, it looks.
Nope, we like mulch, definitely, I can add that to, you know, a column up there.
Around certainly, yeah.
Maybe mulch bed or whatever.
Yeah, I'm just getting, they're blending in with the surrounding grass.
You just was a stick of this.
Well, yeah.
You guys are not just sticking with the grass.
That's why I'm asking the question.
Okay, alright, alright.
Some people, they, they may do that, also, I, yeah.
Yeah, no, even our potty trees have a, have a mulch ring on there.
Yeah, well, the trees, I think it's in our detail, our town detail, just a little shrubs, but anyways, that, yeah, so that's where that one's coming from. Um, the, the bump ends on the building, are those internal walls, like where your water room is on that?
On the big building?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was inside, so there's, yeah, okay.
There's a problem issues, there's a problem issues that's inside. It's inside, okay, I just wasn't sure if that's like a little port or a void that you were just creating.
It's just a void, so if, you know, your AC units under, cover, you know, the roof is open area, I mean.
Oh, it is open, okay.
Yeah, I mean, clearly, and I need to be curious, this is, this is very exactly similar to the building that's already there, that has the exact same incuts with the AC units and all of there. If you wanna go over and, and see it, and, and you haven't seen it, so it's like, it's like an access utility corridor.
Oh, no, it's like.
Wanna see it, hop on over, I'll show it to you.
Oh, that makes sense why you have the storm sword and I wonder, too.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, okay, alright, that one, I won't have a question in, in terms of that.
Yeah, but if anybody has, you know, wants to see it, stop on by, let me know.
No, no, that answers, I, I get, I get what you're trying to do, I just wanted to make sure that's, I was seeing it, um, and the other, a lot of other stuff that did deal with that, I mean, like, or metrics, counts, or just stuff having an actual weight. Uh, the, the one thing I do want, bring up Lance, if you're looking at the stormwater, but I didn't know if that's a temporary spillway elevation, but spillway elevations is like higher than P two. but spillway elevations is like higher than P two.
Yeah, we had that call out on our other worry.
Okay, yeah.
The elevations had to be, have to check on that spillway.
Oh, okay.
Because we want to make sure that it's, it's going to the roadside swell, which there is an existing roadside swell there. They captured this first phase, and it went over to that pine, or whatever that area was identified. And then it goes from there underneath Hook Road to the coal. So I really think from their site, it's going to ultimately discharge the roadside swell and go out. So they have to have a spillway, but we want to make sure the elevation's in. My foot worry, I, I.
Yeah, I, I just concerned since that was the actual elevation, you could have water pumping out of that, that, that. Uh, that, that's all, yeah.
Okay, Tim?
Oh, I have nothing further.
And I have nothing further. Okay, go ahead, Dan.
Um, just because I saw, over the weekend, I think, or whatever, but. Your dumpster enclosure always has garbage outside of it. Is there a sub stack outside of it again?
Not anymore.
Uh, hey, it shouldn't. Let me, all of them, I've known, there, there is, uh, a forest stacked neatly, very neatly, that palace at this moment. But there should.
Okay, is that what I saw, maybe it was palace outside it right now?
That would be it, and like they said, there just needs, I've got people that message.
Maybe it was palace, I, you know.
There's, would you see garbage? Would you have that? I have, I have to watch camera on occasion, they're not allowed to use dumpster. It is not a place to do stuff, but people do do things sometimes, but they're not allowed to do them, and we will rectify it. So if, you know, if enforcement comes by and says, hey, you need to take care of this, we'll take care of that, so.
Maybe it was palace, I just remember when I drove by, and of course, I was going, I caught something from outside of the enclosure, and sure, and.
But those should never be garbage or anything.
Well, yeah, I guess I'm calling garbage, but obviously.
These are recycled materials, the locals, like, when we post on Facebook, or you should see the.
Where are our palace coming from?
Uh, we receive some furniture, stuff like that for designers, um, and sometimes it comes, I don't know, I honestly don't know why it's called a palace, but it does sometimes, um, so we.
Keep it for those people.
Yeah, rather than just hauling them away, because the community seems to like them. So we are.
That's all.
That's it, so.
Just wanted to say from now on, so.
Okay, yeah, we need to show you, we talked about that number time. Um, okay, so for PB zero one zero four dash twenty-two, uh, John, we've got a resolution to continue to the next meeting? Okay.
No.
Oh, where we at?
PB zero eight zero three dash twenty-one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I had that one set. PB zero eight zero three dash twenty-one, preliminary site plan, we have a resolution to continue to the next meeting.
May fourth.
May fourth. Okay, do you have a motion to approve resolutions?
Motion by Tim.
Motion by Tim, second by. Doug, any other comments? Quick take or roll call vote please?
Evolution, complete.
All right.
Agent Douglas.
Hi.
All right. Okay, we'll do the preliminary site plan next time around, uh, please work the staff, get the base stuff in, so we get to the, everybody on time, and we'll move forward. Okay, guys, thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay, next item up, draft amendments to local law, special use criteria permitting warehouse sites. Do we have any additional, because we're done with you guys, so hang around and listen to what we're doing, that's up to you. Um, so, um, Ron, I mean, Ron provided some information, go ahead, Dan.
Um, I know it's out of order, but I believe you have people online for Cassandra. Should we do these L O Cs first?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do some of those enough, I'm going.
All right, I didn't know we had someone online, so let's start with me then, establishing a letter of credit for Tommer Recycling. Uh, okay, do we? I mean, staff is okay with everything on it?
Letter of credit, yeah, absolutely.
Letter of credit for Tomra, staff having one hundred percent complete, sign, seal, deliver.
Yes, uh, and, and RV group, excuse me, RV group, we put down, yeah, provided a letter, required a base, required a dollar amount. Tomber provided an updated estimate, we approved it, we provided it to you for your required nation. I have no issues with the letter of credit, as presented to you guys.
Okay, round the motion to approve resolution for establishing letter of credit for Tommer Recycling. Who bagged it, second by? Doug, any other comments? Quick take or roll call vote please?
Evolution.
All right.
A neat.
All right.
Agent Douglas.
Hi.
Hi. Okay, we're not gonna do the Loomis Road, yeah, Loomis Road. Industrial Park Extension for compliance, because you can't extend something that's been terminated, basically, so. Um, next one would be a letter of, establishing a letter of credit for Country Max, everything is fine, sign, seal, deliver. Motion to, uh, approve the resolution for establishing the letter of credit for Country Max.
Motion by Tim.
Motion by Tim, second by. Adrian, any other comments? Quick take or roll call vote please?
Evolution.
Hi.
A neat.
All right.
Agent Douglas.
Big, oh, I.
All right, okay, Country Max and Tomber are complete, skipping the Loomis Road extension because it doesn't comply. Next item up would be the draft amendments for local law for special use criteria to the town board. Um, where does staff stand with that? Ron's provided the information, you guys have provided some feedback. Any other staff have any other comments on this? Okay, we're up to the board here. Let me start with me. Basically, I'm okay with the comments in general, I think it's an issue between the staff and the town board personally, uh, and I got enough stuff on my plate, I don't need to get in the middle of this. Um, whatever the heck, uh, we got going forward, I'll let the, we'll start with, Tim, you got some comments, questions, recommendations?
I've had some, uh, one sixty-five eighty-four point one R and, uh, PB and Ron's comments answered those for me. So I'm good.
You're good, okay. All right, you're good, Doug?
No, I mean, I, I think most of this stuff has been a trust, I mean, there, there's some items in here, I don't know necessarily, but I don't know what occurs to happen.
Town board is better than that one.
Exactly, I mean, some of the, the, the stuff as far as the screening, I think it's, you know, further covered by MTOD or any of the other districts we have, so. They, some of those things, where we're changing the materials, I think, in the building would be okay, because we can have them screened, if not like the versions of materials, so. I don't really see anything in here.
Okay, you're good, okay, Adrian?
Um, yeah, I mean, I just think there's too much. Yeah, I don't know where to go with it, because he says, and.
Yeah. Town board can figure it out, right, staff and the town board, in my opinion.
A couple of D B probably hashed out, you know, out here, like, you know. I, um, I've read through it a couple of times, and I just, it's hard to.
Okay.
What is wrong?
I understand, I agree with.
I do have one other thing.
Doug's comments that, you know, some of it should probably be something of hurt to say, you know, think of time for development, depending on the project, where it's at. Uh, I think the biggest one that I had a question on was probably the outdoor storage one. And then the solar panel one. You know?
Um, specifically?
Well, it said something about. Few tentative consideration. They're just, maybe, maybe I'm gonna just, the Q or P, but change it to outdoor parking and travel trailers and recreational or something like that, versus the way it was before, goods or something, they were just changing the wording, but it's, it gets confusing a little bit once in a while with so many.
Dan?
Doug, the, the one comment I was gonna have is regardless of direction that team goes, I was just thinking that if, if you're having the same, that it's going to be included on that site, that if it's in the front yard and it's visible from the road, it should be more of an ornamental, or, you know, there's some of those wrought iron type fences, um, or wrought iron, both of those fences, opposed to just chain link across the front porch. But as far as whether it's required to go in, I don't, I, I think that's the operational issue for the, the operator.
Most of them are probably gonna decide if they want or not, most of them probably say yes. I mean, I guess it would also depend, probably the building project, if you really want.
Yeah.
We can talk about, I'm three right now, I mean, he's got a little bit fancy fencing front there, obviously.
Yeah.
And then the rest is chain link, but once that builder is up, you're not gonna see a fancy fence either, so.
True.
Did you really do the fancy fence, so I mean, I guess it would all depend on how the project comes through. How, where, what kind of fence you need, if you want. Fence, because if it's back far enough, and there's gonna be something built in front of it, it's possible that you would never see it. True. So why make the application spend ten thousand extra on portion of fence that, um, it may be, or.
Well, maybe it's one of those, if you put made, you're playing more made or.
I don't, you know, it would all depend on locations.
Yeah, yeah.
And I guess if you're building this right next to the road, you know, then I guess. And it's a main drive, you mean like for tensy?
Never mind, I didn't say that. That's okay, I didn't say that.
If you go back.
I mean, one of those.
But if you go back to Myers, we didn't ask, they just have a chain of things across ninety-six, to beat their stuff.
Yeah, but you gotta, gotta speak back on fence.
Never mind, that's.
All right.
We'll make the decision at the time of.
Right, I understand, I understand. But I guess, I mean, we didn't make Myers go fancy more up than make that's ninety-six inches, because he's cordyly, you know. Obviously, it's not ten foot tall either, so it may be different, but we should make that judgment on where it's being and what's, what it's doing, where it's at.
No, that makes sense.
Okay, so staff, where are we at, what do we need to do next?
We're gonna meet one morning at ten o'clock.
So then I will leave it with this, the town or the planning board has provided our input to staff, and we await the town board's decision on the code, and we will process for you. That make sense?
Is there anything you aren't have?
No. No, I don't think so. So that's enough on the, uh, mini warehouse, okay, open discussion, Ron?
Public hearing next Tuesday night on the farm to market side project.
Anyway, let me just share with you, in case it hasn't been provided yet. The library was supposed to come in at six thirty, they're not coming in. Just wanted you to know, they're not coming in at six thirty, at least that's what they told me, just give it a day, so. Just, as you mentioned that meeting, I just wanted to bring that up, okay, but, I'm sorry.
Um, yeah, it's public hearing on the, uh, incentive zoning project there for farming markets. And there'll be some comments about equity of transportation improvements in that area, which I just prepared a response to everything, but go back to one of the returns, so we'll see where it all goes.
And if I remember conversations I've had recently, we have or have not received the traffic study information. Um, from, huh?
From anybody.
From anybody, okay, so we haven't, so the town has not received a traffic study as related to this fact, okay. Just wanted to get an add on the record, go ahead.
Yep. And, uh, it's more a nice ag advisory committee.
Okay.
Uh, we're gonna talk about some of the, uh, pitfalls that people are running into with these farm land protection grants, and all that ag markets helps. And also talk about, um, hopefully agricultural conservation zoning districts. Cool, cool, yeah.
You're just talking about solar, you're just in solar discussions? Okay.
Right now, to my knowledge, which doesn't seem much, there is no solar application pin.
Okay. Dan?
You don't?
I believe you're done, aren't you? I thought so, yeah.
I didn't want to interrupt you toward the end, I'm sorry. All right, um, first off, I wanna thank you guys for your input for code review. Um, as you can imagine, it's a very difficult task to update codes, and any input that we get from the board is always appreciated. I mean, Ron comes up with great ideas, my staff comes up with great ideas sometimes, but, but we think, but it's always good to have that, that third party, uh, review, so I appreciate that. Uh, your next meeting, May fourth, you did just continue to say plates of storage, uh, for the preliminary review. You have, uh, Harbrough, this is a re-subdivision of section seven A and B. Um, they had to, this was already subdivided a while ago, quite a while ago, actually, and they are looking to build this section, but with a new, I don't know, smaller requirements, they need to do stormwater and how it was laid out, they allow for that, so they had to redesign how the lots are laid out. So that's why they're coming in for a re-subdivision. And then, uh, your other project that's coming back is, uh, the caps, I hope, road for a final subdivision. So that has been addressed, uh, you did preliminary, got all those corrected, and he's back for his file. Uh, then the only other thing I want to report on is, Bell River Solar is coming in tomorrow afternoon for their pre-construction meeting, uh, to allow them to apply for their vote building permits, and we did moving on that project, so.
Good. About time, it's still in appeal, state from a legal standpoint, correct?
Uh, six months, uh, ends on May fif- uh, May fifteenth.
Okay.
And then there's a possibility they could extend.
Extend.
End of the period, sorry.
Okay. Tim, highway Tim?
Uh, highway, uh, just getting away into Creek Road and working on water line up on Town Line Road. We get that in, kind of slowing up the project, slow go up there, lots of utilities in the way, had to locate all those. Uh, other than that, looking forward to a nice warm weekend.
Okay, good.
Check anything, then hopefully I'll be back to full staff.
Good, good, good. Lance?
Uh, no, I just wanted to reiterate what I mentioned to you and it's that earlier, that MRB group going forward will make sure that we inform the board and staff on the projects that we receive for review, because we don't get all the projects, so sometimes there isn't going to be a comment letter from MRB group. I think it's important for the back, the board and staff to know that as soon as the process is, I can, that you're not receiving anything, but if there's comments related to it that you need me to be prepared for, most certainly I can do. Second part of that is I'll make sure that MRB group does a better job of, the ones that we are providing comment on this board, you guys are getting it in your bag, which means we need to get it to the town as soon as we possibly can, so that staff can do their thing, Ron can do his requirements, and also you guys have it for your review. So I'll make sure that we do a better job of informing both the board and staff on those things when they come up.
All right, and what I've asked Lance to do is, if, or to let us know by the, when the packets go out, if there's gonna be a comment letter, and if so, when it is, hopefully the comment letter will be with it, but if it's not, that's not necessarily terrible, give us some idea of when we can expect a comment letter, and make sure that staff then sends it out, so I'm sure Sarah will do that once she gets it. Now, the conversations from earlier today, um, tweaked me a little bit, and I'm gonna give you my interpretation of what I basically heard, and how all of this may not be totally accurate. I just wanted to, so basically, through the conversation, we basically had that unless there's some really weird thing going on, as, as long as there's no indication that a major redesign would be required to meet stormwater requirements, that there is no problem approving preliminary and then maybe even final with stormwater issues outstanding, since they're gonna have to be against any. Is that fairly accurate?
I think it's always, I don't think what you said is incorrect, but I want to make it clear. The board has comments on stormwater, you're not comfortable moving forward, that's completely your prerogative, and that's part of your decision making. You have the authority to hold, anything else to get the answers that you feel are needed in order for you to make a decision. I just wanted to inform you, though, on some of the assumptions that maybe I had assumed you understood, or maybe it wasn't very clear, that with every project that comes through this process, that's the, that's what we are looking for.
Okay, all right. Okay, public, Mr. Public?
I just wanna bring one thing to the board, just to check.
Please do.
I didn't notice out there where I always lost on that project out front, where they had the minimal amount of topsoil that they were, they had substantial amount of room over by Carmen's way stockpile. I've noticed almost as much as what was there last time, the three foot of soil that they stripped off, and they're not done stripping yet, and it is stockpiled all along three thirty-two, so I anticipate, uh, the dust blowing across three thirty-two all summer again this year.
No possible way that could happen. I'm sure the staff's gonna ensure. No possible way that could happen, I'm sure the staff's gonna ensure that all those topsoil piles are stabilized completely prior to any blowing of any, their, have I correct that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
They, they, with, with all their core testing, there was already a minimal amount of topsoil in any spot on there, and I, I have knowledge to cut, it's possibly to be deep, I do believe somebody told them that.
What is that? Anyone online there? Nobody left, okay, um, from a chairman's standpoint, let you know that I got met with staff through science, so, so they didn't like the attending, but I did it anyway, and, uh. Um, going forward, I, hopefully we can address things, keep things moving, maybe a little smoother than they have in the very near, uh, past, um. But I know that staff really cares, and are working hard, and everybody has their heart into a lot of this going on, and I appreciate staff, I, you may not know that after the conversation earlier today, but, uh, truly, I appreciate staff, I appreciate everything you do for us. And for the town, and, uh, but, uh, let's hope we can get over these bumps, and we be moving forward, or I'll move forward, one or the other, so we'll be, okay, board got any comments?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, on Don's conversation, um, with that pile on three thirty two, I was gonna say, there's only the steel fences on three thirty two, you don't need one down. The pathway or something with a pile that high or something, like their plastic fencing or whatever there, is that correct, I mean? It only needs to be on.
That's an engineering question.
Steel fence has to be placed on the downward slope ten feet from the toe of the, of the topsoil, I wear a side pile, ten feet away, give it room for the wall, and then on the downward side, because it doesn't go uphill, it goes downhill. So, as long as the steel fence is placed around it.
On the one side by the.
Protected for that when runoff hits it, and it goes somewhere, that steel fence is there to, is to capture that, that's where the steel fence should be.
And there is none.
There is none.
So then, staff should look into that and check out that, make sure everything's taken care of.
Two, three foot from the, hey, that way.
I thought they would sell that the whole thing, but I don't.
Sometimes it's.
I don't see. Well, if you got a hill, it's gotta be downhill, it's gotta be on both sides.
But, yeah, I mean, we're downhill over the thing, it's gotta be.
It's gotta be on both sides.
So it's gotta be like.
That's why I just wanted.
We don't always put it around it because it, it doesn't make sense, it's just gonna get trampled, unless there's a protection thing that we're trying to prevent other people from getting.
I would have wanted like half that mudslide to go into the pathway if somebody tried to walk down there.
Staff can take care of that. Anything else?
Is the, um. Project at a halt right now for the. Um, one exit tops there, I can do the.
GLN?
GLN, is that, is that stopped right now?
Yes, they pulled all their staff off of that one, I'm sure.
Because of the problems with tops right now, or?
There's no problem.
Well, the developer, GLN seems like they have a problem.
They have a problem.
Well, that's what I mean, GLN has a problem.
Okay, good, but.
Okay, but, so.
I can't tell you why they stopped, I can tell you that they relocated their staff to the country park.
And I can tell you the site needs to be stabilized within seven days from the time they remove their equipment.
And I can also tell you.
Well, they removed the equipment, because half was buried.
But they're not using the, they have to work the ground within seven days.
So.
That should all be stabilized.
Right. And it's not.
And it's not, and they're.
And they haven't touched it, okay.
So did you give a violation notice?
Okay.
We're working.
And they have how long to address the violation notice?
And this.
Seven days.
Seven days.
Is this the same as like, um, where equipment with the, the millions that they go over there and drive over one day, it counts as construction again?
There's still allowances, but. I mean, I think staff does a good job of making sure that that's done.
Uh, you just went through the soil and erosion control, just driving over it doesn't constitute.
I, I know.
They have to move there.
Okay, so.
Yes, bugs can be.
I, I wanna just correct something, they're not violating, they're in notice of violation, which then if they don't correct it, then they go into violation.
Yeah, most of violation, they get seven days, and then they go into violation, and they have seven days from that, so what, taken the court?
Work stop.
Work stop.
I can bring D C and, these people tie, I mean, there's a whole bunch of things, usually we don't.
Does that like work stop the project around there, or is that work stop?
But, yeah, remember, when we do a work stop, they have to be removed, and they have to do things, and there's, there's dollar value to remove those. So, it's just not that they can't work there, which they wouldn't care right now because they're not working there, well.
But it would require them to take action on those items for the reason of the stop work order.
There's a process, again.
Oh, yeah, I just, I just wanted to know, because I feel like I hadn't seen much going on with it.
Oh, they stopped, yeah.
I thought it stopped, right, P R C minutes of reading was, they weren't happy right now, so.
There was some other non-issues on the site for a while, I believe, where pro bono. Their ability didn't get up there more much.
Okay, any else, Adrian?
I don't think so.
Doug?
No, I'm different.
Tim?
A couple of questions, anyone planning on the twenty seventh annual local government conference in Hilton College, June eighth?
Hey.
I'm going.
And what is the registration process, the cheapest cost is if you register online, so.
Just something I see now, or something there before you?
Yeah, is, is there another one, it's about, maybe I think?
Oh, yeah.
For.
Yeah, you're going on to Batavia, right?
Yeah, I guess, that, like, the one that they used to refer to based on, they're doing one out.
I think of that one. It's not bad.
Remember that?
I don't, I don't.
I got it from, I think from when I attended before, it actually came from my other emails, so.
Reset that out, will you?
Yeah, yeah, I'll forward that out.
No, Dan's gonna reset that out, but Batavia's a lot easier to get to than Hilton College.
Yeah, because it came directly from John C. Crowley.
Yeah, I think I saw it myself, because I.
Uh, yeah, right, yeah.
And.
Yeah, and they have some.
Food for you.
I've been doing the MRV one right now, can I?
Yeah, I do.
If you hit, if you hit eight out of tens that they do or something?
Yeah, we do one every month with.
Yeah.
Collaboration with Hancock.
So, I mean, I'm trying to do that, but maybe it's all in sport, there's a backup.
Then there's usually some side ones with solar and some other things, but I can take a look at the one in Batavia, and then I'll decide which one.
Okay, and I found out MRV ones with Hancock, my understanding is, is that the municipality allows it, you don't have to join us live, or you can watch the recording. Oh, it's in the credit, we can send you the link of it to get it, that's my understanding, so I don't know the reason. But I don't believe it. I think they have to get it, I'm sorry.
You don't get a certificate unless you're out of block.
That I don't, my understanding, someone was looking for that, they're looking for, we had a question, that came up from some other municipality, who couldn't make it, wanted to watch four, and receive four credits. She asked the attorneys that we collaborate with, they said that's not an issue as long as the municipality that you are within, well, it's stuck there. We can send you the link, so that's obviously a trust.
Yeah.
Exactly, yeah, they're in conflict with other meetings I have all the time, I haven't been able to take advantage.
I would say that if that is a, a thought process, work with Ron and Dan to find out whether or not the county department would permit that.
Ron, can you check with the town supervisor and see if he's okay with us doing it online, and how he then wants us to get credit for it? And then we'll, we'll know, if you'll send that to me, I'll send it to you, okay?
That is great, thanks.
Any else, Tim?
That's all, thanks.
Okay, any other comments by anybody? Motion due adjourned by Tim, second by Adrian, all in favor? Aye, alright.